All right, it is seven o'clock on Thursday, October 12th here at Albernett City Hall. This is our regular October city council meeting. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, civil, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move on to roll call.
Counsel Trump.
Present.
Counsel Rosenberg.
Present.
Counsel Schultz.
Present.
Counsel Myers.
Present.
Take note, T.J. present, if not present tonight.
Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business. Any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
All right, with that, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Myers.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. That motion carries. The sheriff's report is on page seven of your packet. Shows that the required forty-three hours were met with fifteen calls for service. If you have any questions, please get those to Chris and he will hand them off to Major Colston. Unless there's anything we need to discuss as a group. Things been going pretty smooth. All right, next item is the mayor's report. I just have two things for this month. The first is, we did have our digital sign forum with representatives from our local nonprofits. We hosted that digitally or virtually on Zoom on September 25th. It was an excellent meeting. We got a lot of great feedback and suggestions. It was nice to have the engagement and involvement that we did. I think we had nine representatives from the various organizations. So, next steps on that is that Chris and I will be working. We'll take that feedback and we're going to work to put it into the policy. We're shooting for January timeframe to have that policy ready for council review. We will be sure to send it over to our lawyer first, just to make sure that everything is good to go. So, any question? I will open that for questions, any questions on that, since that's been presented to council several times.
What are some of the main highlights that, what was discussed in terms of how to use the sign?
Yeah, so I had set up some polls so that we could gather feedback. And then the nice thing is I have the reporting from those polls that we can go back to. So, we talked about logistically, so how far in advance of an event do we post? If it's not an event, how far, how long does it stay on the sign? You know, how many screens does it have, those types of things. But we did also talk about content. And so, it was unanimous amongst the group, and again, this is just for their feedback, but it was unanimous amongst the group to support the area nonprofits with their events, as well as accolades for achievements and things like that, which I don't disagree. And so, we had talked before with the policy, we just need to be able to put those guardrails. So, we also discussed if it's not affiliated with a nonprofit, you know, how do we handle that? And so, it was good conversation.
I think there was pretty much common sense used.
Yep.
There was no way out left field.
Yep, it was good conversation.
I think it was pretty much common sense.
Yep, we did kind of, we got into, we were talking about nonprofits, you know, how do you, how far do we reach? Because it's easy if it's an Albernett nonprofit, but they mentioned there are other nonprofits throughout the school district that also benefit the town. And Pastor Dan Peterson was on the call for one of the local churches, and he mentioned that maybe we do approve nonprofits. So, there's an application process that comes to council to approve, and then that's how they become someone who can submit for messages. So, some pretty good suggestions. I'm excited to comb back through it. We did record it, so I can go back and fill in. I took notes as well. We'll pull all that together and get a policy right now.
It was common sense involved.
It was a very good meeting. So, appreciate everyone that was able to give us their hour and join. Next steps on that, again, we're looking January to have something in front of you all, and I'll keep you posted if that happens to slip for whatever reason. My only other update is on the park. You'll notice it's not under old business. We just don't have a lot of action for council just yet. But Chris and I did have a meeting with the engineer. They're working on the designs. They gave us that first pass, and so, we're going back and finalizing that. And so, we will have more in the coming months. But just know that we are on, I believe we're on track. The plan is to get all the planning stuff done during the cold months, and then we can start construction in the spring. So, the park is on track, and I'm very excited for where, how it's shaping up. That's it from a mayor's report. Next, I will go to council reports, and we will start to my left with Counsel Myers.
I think you're reporting.
Counsel Schultz. Mr. Rosenberg?
Definitely to start.
Counsel may report.
All right. We will skip citizen comments, as there are no citizens present tonight, and move on to written reports. So, now we're at page eight of the packet with the fire department report. I would like to thank our fire department. This October seems to be a busy month for them with a lot of PR that they do. So, they participated in the ACDC Fall Fest this past Saturday, as well as they have the Cedar Rapids Safety House on loan from the Cedar Rapids Fire Department, and they hosted pre-K through, I believe, second grade today out at the fire station for Fire Safety Awareness Week. So, I'm eager to hear how that went. I haven't had a chance to connect with anyone. And then, they've been doing footballs nearby for all of the home football games as well, which this coming Friday, or tomorrow, will be a soggy one for homecoming. So, they've been extremely busy on top of answering to their calls that they get that come in. So, there are a couple of issues with some trucks, one of which we have quotes on the agenda for tonight. So, we will discuss that further. Any questions on the fire department report that I might be able to answer?
I appreciate the quality of reports we give. That's good.
All right. If there are no questions, we will move on to city administration, starting with Public Works. That is on, I'm still scrolling.
I do not have anything to add, but I am open for any questions to my half.
Page thirteen is where that starts.
I have a question.
Go ahead, we have a written question.
I have not found one, and I do not believe one exists. I think it was a gentleman's agreement.
That is further on the agenda, sir. We can take action on that tonight. Any questions on Public Works? All right, hearing none, city clerk.
I have nothing else to add unless you have questions. Do keep in mind, I will, it's on there, but October 18th through the 20th, I will be gone. I'm actually leaving the night of the 17th, since it is in Des Moines, and I have to be there at seven in the morning the next day. During that period, I will have the main computer with me. It's just city hall will be closed.
And we will post that on Facebook and the sign? Do we have room on the sign?
If we don't have room on the sign, I can post it on Facebook.
Okay.
I'll put it in front.
Sounds good. Any questions on the clerk's report? And finally, treasury.
This is again, nothing additions. I did meet with clerk books today to go over how to do budgets in clerk books. I think you're going to be pleased with how we can do it, because it's, basically, it's going to be an Excel sheet where I can, if you guys are like, well, I think we need a hundred more dollars here, I can literally click in the Excel sheet, it goes at a hundred dollars, and that will show you what you're going to be at. It's going to be way more detailed than you've had before, because it is going to go into detail about your water rates. It's going to show you whether or not you're charging enough, whether or not you're bringing in enough to cover your expenses. And this goes for sewer and all the other rates. So, that'll be in November, when I get that put together, to then be able to start adding numbers. So, again, if you have anything that you want to add to the budget next year, I need to know as soon as possible.
Last call for questions for Chris. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any additions or changes here, Chris?
There are no additions.
I would look for approval on the consent agenda. Moved by Schultz, seconded by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. New business starts on page twenty-five. So, 11A, review quotes for fire truck repair. So, this is, we have an issue with a transmission on one of the trucks. I do apologize to our department members, I can never keep the truck number straight. So, they have gotten it diagnosed. It's just a matter of programming and installing the new chip or whatever, whatever it is. Sounds like it's a pretty simple repair. We have two quotes in here, both of which I did notice have tax on them, so that number can be ignored. So, you can just look at the subtotal that's on there. There's one from Peterbilt in Cedar Rapids. There's another from an organization in Des Moines. I do apologize, Chris, I don't know if I see the name of the, do we have who that's with?
That inland truck parts company?
Yeah.
They're on there somewhere, I'm just curious.
Yeah, where you see that at?
I see it on the tax exempt on the next page.
Good eye, good eye. All right, so with inland truck parts company out of Des Moines, they are the ones that helped to diagnose the problem. And it's our understanding that they are one of the few in the state that are certified to work on, is it an Allison transmission? Is that? So, while it's a drive, they are low bid, even considering the gas costs in order to transport the truck to them.
Do you have any idea how long it takes the state to fix this?
I think it's a one-day turnaround.
It's pretty quick.
It is something that can be done every week.
No. No. Because they've already downloaded what they needed to program the new one. It's just a matter of putting it in.
So, it's just new software, basically, where it is.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Something like that.
Yeah, we got you.
I think there's something mechanical there too, that I don't understand, but yes. No, it's my understanding, it's a safety trip.
Yeah, good. Well, I just ask, because...
Yeah, the only thing they have is $250 later. Don't know how long it takes.
I just put the gas cost in there, since you're aware of, we got to add that for what we're doing. But yes, you are right, the tax will be up once I submit the W9, so.
Now, the company isn't certified to work on those transmissions?
We're unsure.
We're unsure.
That's the thing, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have the comfort level I do with the one in Des Moines, and I don't want to talk to them and confirm.
Okay.
Oh, I got to get somebody to drive it down there.
You don't get a day off.
Yeah.
You don't get those.
Do we accept this?
I would like a motion to accept it.
Do we accept the motion with inland truck parts company to repair the fire truck, based on their quote, which is $3,169? And there will be taxes off of that.
Motion by Trump?
Seconded.
Seconded by Schultz. Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. 11B, this is page twenty-eight. We have a new application for a fire department member. You know, this gentleman comes to us, he was with the Center Point Fire Department for a very long time, and recently moved into town. So, excited that he's excited to join. So, I would seek a motion to approve the new member application for the fire department for Cameron Newbix.
I motion to accept Cameron Newbix as a new employee for Albernett Outta Creek Fire Department.
Motion by Bozenberg?
Second.
Seconded by Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. That motion carries. Page twenty-nine for 11C, Resolution 2023-17. This is to place the warning curve and fifteen mile an hour signs on Willow Street. I do apologize, I can get into this group afterwards. I did not have an opportunity to summarize the data that we got off the speed sign. What we did find is there's not, there's not a big problem. We saw literally one car, I believe, that was going further over the speed limit than I would be comfortable. I believe that was a thirty-five mile an hour. For the most part, when the sign, so we ran it, the sign in two modes, where they can see their speed and, you know, flashes at them. When we did that, there were actually nearly zero records of anyone speeding. They were all going, the max, they were going twenty-five mile an hour, but it did not record any speeding. We later flipped it to stealth mode, where it was still collecting data as cars went by. We did see a slight increase in folk speeding, but by speeding, they were going between twenty-seven and twenty-eight. By no means was it a racetrack through there necessarily.
Didn't we find that it mostly was at night?
Yes, a lot of them were midnight, eleven o'clock. So, I can summarize that and get it out to the group. I do have the data, I just didn't have a chance to summarize it.
It was presented as this is a, really a problem during daylight hours when kids are out, but the problem's more at night.
Yes, and we're not seeing the school traffic go down Willow. They are turning and going down Third. So, we're just not seeing it. Additionally, we did do some research, and according to our ordinance, in order to change a speed limit, we have to do an engineering study and a speed study. My inkling is, this street is relatively new. It's recently been engineered, so I have a feeling an engineered study would show us that it's, that twenty-five mile an hour is a tolerable speed. I don't think we will get the results from those studies that we would like. So, the recommendation is to put warning signs up, so that people are aware. As noted in the resolution, this does not actually change the speed limit, but we can put up the yellow signs that you see as you come up on curbs, just warning people that, hey, you might want to slow down, because this is kind of tight.
It's not enforceable.
Right, but will these be just accurate entering the curb or on the end of the streets? Or what?
One on either side.
One on either side of the entrance, which when you, if we did the motion, would have to say we're putting on either side of the entrance.
Yep, and it does.
It's just as good as having the sign myself.
Yeah.
It's a good compromise.
It's a relatively short street, so one sign on either side should be sufficient. As far as it not being enforceable, that requires the sheriff to be around anyway, even if we were to change the speed limit, but we would have to incur substantial costs. And I'm more than willing to, the sign is still there, I'd like to see it moved for a while, but we can always put these up, go back out, study it again, and see if it does make a difference. So, that is what has entailed in Resolution 2023-17.
Always they don't think it's changing the speed limit.
They can think that. I'm more than happy if they want to think that.
Well, we're hoping, we're hoping that's the case.
Based on the resolution, we're clear that we're not changing the speed limit.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass Resolution 2023-17 as written.
Motion by Myers, seconded by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. That motion carries. 2023-18. So, this is a resolution to approve the community room rental agreement and rates. If you all recall, we put together a community room rental policy for the space that we have out at the new fire station. At that time, I did study other area spaces of similar capacity and amenities and those types of things in order to set the rates. What we are seeing is it's not being utilized very frequently. We do think cost may be a factor to that. And so, really, all this is, this resolution is doing is changing the rates. So, we're not changing, and there's a slight change within the policy. I believe our previous one was not written as intended as far as damage deposits, because on there, we had for nonprofit public events, that they didn't even require a damage deposit. We are now requiring damage deposits for all renters. And again, that's refundable if there is no damage. But, so the other change is to, for Albernett residents, this is still a full-day rental. We're not doing partial days. So, a hundred dollars for a full-day rental, a hundred and fifty for non-residents. Previously, we had weekend and weekday rates. We're consolidating that into one rate. So, really, just hoping we see more utilization out of the space.
How many times has that been rented since it's been open? And how long has it been open now?
Gosh, we've been in, Charlie was still there, so...
Put up in twenty years, twenty...
It was finished in twenty-one, I believe. Spring of twenty-one is when we moved in, so that's two years, going on three.
Do you have any idea how many times it's been rented?
Okay, if you want to know how many times my residence, I can tell you that. Three. How many times by?
Anybody else?
Yeah, by nonprofits that happen, you know, a dozen or more. And so, the thing is, is that, yeah, it's being utilized by nonprofits, but we don't, we're not making any charge money on that.
But it's still great, because those are community events. So, I'm not going to scoff at that. And we do still, rental fee for nonprofits is still free. We're just going to ask that they place damage deposits, because we need to be able to cover if something were to happen.
I have three more already for this year, so we might break you.
What is capacity there?
Seventy-five. Fifty codes the tables. That's what I usually tell people, is, you know, between fifty and seventy-five, fifty can sit.
That's pretty reasonable rate, I think.
Probably get more people in at that rate.
That's what we're hoping. We'd like to see it used.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for Resolution 2023-18 to approve the community room for rental rates.
Motion by Bozenberg?
Second.
Seconded by Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. That motion carries. Oh, there is a copy of the agreement in your packet, if you wanted to read through it, but we did summarize the changes. So, that brings us to page thirty-seven. This is Resolution 2023-19 to approve spending authority for city administrator. So, this came out of, it actually was prompted by the fire truck that we just approved. So, that truck, currently, Chris has spending authority up to $2,000, so he can approve without council approval to be able to spend $2,000 if we know that there's budget available. The truck with the transmission issue, they got a pre-quote from the Des Moines shop before they took it out there. It was under $2,000. Chris said, yeah, go ahead. By the time they got there and they really dug into it, that cost had gone up. And so, unfortunately, the truck had to make the trip all the way home, because we couldn't, he could not authorize to spend that money in order to make that repair happen. I also know that when Guy was still here with, as Public Works Director, he had a similar spending authority for situations like when Lynn County was nearby grading streets, and they were going to be on the ground road. He could authorize that they go ahead and do the work. And so, I asked Chris to draw up this resolution that would increase his spending authority to $5,000 without council approval. Again, that's, he's got awareness of the budget. I would say when we approved for Guy, I mean, we're, we're good five or six years later, and you just, you're not going to get much for $2,000 these days, unfortunately. And so, that cost has gone up. The need for us to allow Chris some flexibility in order to do his work, I believe, has also increased.
Remove or adopt Resolution 2023-19?
Motion by Trump? Seconded by Bozenberg? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You want roll call on that?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
Counsel Trump?
Aye.
Counsel Bozenberg?
Aye.
Counsel Schultz?
Aye.
This is not here, Counsel Myers?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, 11F, review quotes for repairs on siding at the city maintenance shop. So, this is page thirty-nine in your packet. We did receive one quote from Derek Tetrel. I guess, Chris, if you could just, I don't even entirely understand what needs to be repaired, so if you just want to give them an idea.
Previous employee must have ran into the side of the siding on the shop. It has been kind of hanging loose in two areas. I'm guessing it was hit by the skid loader from the looks of the damage. I just need it repaired before we get to winter, so that that exposed area that has wood on it is not exposed anymore.
Is that the south side?
It's on the, it's on the pole shed side. You can see it if you go out there, it's just a chunky bit.
It's on the east side? And I agree, you're looking north.
Looking this way north, it's on the, it's on this side. There's about midsection, it's the third bay, I think.
Okay, it's worth, you have the pole building part.
And it's down at the bottom, you can see where it's...
It's on the pole building.
Yeah. It's been where, you can see where it's been.
Snagging on the doors.
The skid loader comes in and out of there, that's a good thing, I can think of it.
There are two spots?
Yeah, there's two spots that need to be repaired. And again, it's more of a, cosmetically, it looks bad, but also to protect the building itself.
They didn't hurt the, they didn't hurt the frame of the building?
No, it just hurt the side of it.
So, it's just a matter of ten, bend, ten, whatever.
So, we did put this up for bid. We received one quote. Looks like between materials and labor, they're expecting a total of $1,950. I would recommend, there's, there's not a lot of structure in the quote. And so, while they say they foresee six hours, they did give us a per-man-hour rate in there. I would suggest the council put a hard max on this, and then Chris can manage the expectations with the contractor.
Looking at the $1,500 for labor, that's quite a bit. It shouldn't take that long with what's there. I've worked in sheet metal, so it's like, yeah, you could pay for six hours to do it.
Sure.
It shouldn't take six hours.
Well, and again, it's up to you if you want to approve this, or we can, if you know somebody that can do the work, we can open it up to bid again. I just would like to get it done before winter.
Unless they have to run to Cedar Rapids, I don't know whether I'd have been, you know, bending ten and maybe paying for travel time, you know, with the actual work. That is still probably not a bad price.
Well, it says, reach out for any questions. I wonder, would it be worth asking a few more questions and get a breakdown for a actual labor cost per hour plus materials?
Well, it does have that on there. Materials are $4.50, labor is $1.25 an hour for the six hours.
Yeah.
So, it's just a matter of, you know, I assume we'll get billed for the actual hours, to your point.
As implied.
Yeah.
But, I'm not sure.
Right.
And it's such a small job.
That's the thing, it's...
Try to get another company.
I was having problems even getting anybody to look at it, because it's such a small job in life, and it's not worth our price.
That's where you're going to have to, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
I just go with it.
Does that motion land?
Sure. We'll, we'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the bid for $1,950 to repair the pole barge building, or who is it?
Derek Tetrel.
Derek, Derek Tetrel?
Motion by Bozenberg?
Second.
Seconded by Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. That motion carries. All right, review quotes for tree removal at city lagoons. This is by recommendation of the DNR. It was in Chris's Public Works Report that the tree that is there is starting to infiltrate within cell two, I believe it is, and the shade alone is impacting the algae levels within that lagoon as well. So, it was highly recommended that we remove this tree. It is something that would not necessarily have to be done before winter. This is something we're looking to do probably by spring. Again... Again, put it up for bid. It appears that we only received the one quote.
Didn't we receive two quotes? I thought we just received two other quotes.
We've only got, we only got one quote, because the other one wasn't actually quoted. It was a conversation.
Oh.
I can't.
Well.
Yeah.
With this, I would like to table this then, and I'll get a better quote with you.
Okay.
If you know the person that's doing it.
One tree.
And he told me today that you could probably do it for like thirty-eight hundred dollars, so I will check back with him.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't grind stumps out of my yard today, so. So let's, I would move to table this till next month, since we're no big hurry. And I'll get back with you. He could have it out of there, you know, in no time. And he will, now, when he's grinding the stump down, he'll bring in a bigger stump grinder, but he'll go down thirty inches with the, taking the stumps and everything else. He just won't come around the top of it, so, okay?
Motion by Bozenberg to table?
Second.
Second by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We will table until the next meeting. Thank you. Eleven H, fire hydrant replacement quotes. This starts on page forty-four. So here, we do have two quotes. This is to replace two hydrants. Is that my understanding, Chris?
That is correct.
Do we have the hydrants, or does?
We do have the hydrants. We don't have the valve boxes. Those will be supplied in the quote. First, we do the quote, and this is for, as the quotes are stated, for repairs.
So these are apples-to-apples quotes?
Yes.
So the first is from Reckie for twelve thousand eighty-five dollars. And the second, several pages down, is from Pierce Tobin for fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. And actually, this says that the owner was supplying the valve. We just don't have the valve boxes?
Correct, yeah. That's, he's probably being the valve box, but that's basically what it is.
Well, this says owner supplied hydrant and valve.
We've got the hydrants, and we've got the, the valve. There's some box that goes on it.
Oh, okay, fair enough. Pleasure of the council. I assume this is a pre-winter thing. Is this, did we find this during flushing, that they need to be replaced?
This actually was something on Guy's list before he left. That's why he bought the fire hydrants. They've been sitting back there for a while. It was the parts and the fact that they're starting to leak, like around the seals.
I think that was the last two. They can't get parts for this.
Right, yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Sounds familiar. I feel like it would be who of us to get this done before winter, if, if they're able to get here.
Fourteen fifty-five, how much was that?
Twelve thousand eighty-five from Reckie.
Reckie used dead of twelve thousand eighty-five dollars to replace two fire hydrants?
Motion by Trump?
Second.
Second by Schatz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, lagoon maintenance and sheep grazing agreement. There's nothing in your packet for this one. Chris, I wasn't there, so I'm more than happy to hand it over to you, but I'll just give some background. That we did hear from the DNR. They came out for an inspection, and for the most part, everything looked good. We do have some disturbance to the riprap around the lagoons. They also recommended the tree removal. One of their primary concerns is in regards to the sheep that we have on the property. So they are concerned that they are the ones disturbing the riprap. They're causing ruts around the lagoons as well. We did have an issue where one of the animals was found deceased on land, and the DNR representative did mention that had that been in one of the lagoons, we'd have had a real mess on our hands, and so. Yes. So is there anything else on the maintenance piece, Chris, that you wanna touch on?
Just kinda summed it all up, that, yeah, essentially, the sheep gotta go. And for the two hundred and fifty a year that we're getting from the lease, it's not covering the damages that we're gonna have to, to replace. And, I mean, we just need to mow it. That, that's just things the reality is. We just have to mow that property.
Which we've still had to. So we've had to mow in addition. I do also recall when the sheep agreement first happened. So it is two hundred and fifty dollars a year for us to allow them out there. We also had to buy a special weed spray that was pet-friendly, so that we didn't, if they were eating the weeds, that we sprayed around the lagoons, and so there, we are incurring costs in addition to what, in addition to the damage and those types of things. So it would be my recommendation that we cease the grazing agreement. Once the sheep are removed this winter, we can allow them to finish out this year, but they, they do generally take them out in the fall. And so we've already communicated with the farmer that, that this concern has been raised, and there's a chance that they will not be allowed to return in the spring. That would be my recommendation, but I'll leave it to the pleasure of council. And then, Chris, do we have a timeline on when we need to make any repairs, or is that?
We've already started the repairs.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, the repairs are already happening as we speak.
We don't have any long-term agreement or land lease or anything with, with the farmer. It's just kind of an annual, pays is still work, and, and they've, they've brought them back in, so.
I think the bottom line is that we need to stay on the good side of the DNR.
Yes.
And this, the sheep have to go.
They were quite clear that we should consider.
The last thing we need is them down here.
Yes.
Cause they, they get poking around, who knows what they might find or think they found.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Motion, motion to cease the sheep grazing agreement this fall.
I'll second that.
Second by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. All right.
Though my kids will be disappointed to know that we won't have sheep employed by our city anymore.
More sheep in town. All right, eleven J, hidden curb stops. This is page forty-nine. So is this the work that H R Green's been doing to help us locate all of our curb stops?
Correct. So what transpired, was they had a gentleman out here that found most of the curb stops. As you can see on here. So about two hundred and twenty were found, sixty were not. And what we were finding is the ones that were not found, we were gonna start a process where we were gonna do ten a month or whatever, you know, in, in our schedule, to try to go locate those by going into the house, hooking up to the line with an electrode that then electrifies the entire line, then we walk out and we can be able to ping it. Well, the couple that we did do, we found that they're under cement. Either driveways, landscaping, one was like ten inches down in the dirt. The dirt one's not a problem. The ones that are under driveways are. According to our ordinance, those have to be accessible, and it is the property owner's responsibility to make those accessible.
So they ported the, ported the driveway over, though?
Correct. And we do believe that that happened when whatever construction was going on, or they were building the house, or.
Are these in the older part of town?
Mixed bag.
Every, that, everywhere. It's your red dots on the.
Yeah, I see that.
Oh, I guess I wasn't looking. Yeah, it's the red dots on the page, the page.
So.
That's too bad.
A little bit.
Yeah, dude, now, look near your yard.
No, it's not. I don't remind that.
There is like a couple suggestions where, you know, maybe from the line that goes into the house, a secondary stop is put in that can be turned off. All the way to, and then they, this is talking to other cities. They are talking to citizens that, yep, you're gonna have to find the line and bring it out back into the yard and then reconnect it, so you've gotta pay and have someone do that. I'm only bringing this up, this is just a discussion, that we need to think about how we're gonna handle this when it comes time. We're not obviously doing it right now.
Do we still have the plan to go out and do ten a month and try and locate?
We're gonna try. I have to get the, I'm gonna borrow Kenny's from Center Point's locator, cause he has that equipment to do the, you know, click onto it. Again, it's, I gotta borrow it every time, you know, that I, I can do that. Unless we decide to purchase that, I don't know the cost, purchasing one of those. I know it's not cheap.
Really, once you go through this once, we shouldn't have to.
We should never have to do this again after we do this once.
I hate to purchase it.
So, yeah, and I would, but then in future development, that is something that we wanna make very clear, that when they are putting in, you know, a design for a house with the driveway, they need to steer clear of the, where the water lines coming in.
Either that or make it, do you write in the driveway?
Right, or there.
There are some like that, too.
There are some, there are some like that, but like I said, the ones that we're missing are not.
Well, I would recommend we continue to locate them.
Yeah.
And make notes, and then once we know how many are under concrete and these types of things, I think that'll help inform what next steps can look like. Is that a one-man job, or is that something you're gonna need assistance with?
It's a one-man job, but it's a, I mean, it's, I've gotta contact the homeowner to be able to get in, and then I've gotta schedule days to do it, and then I gotta go in and then hook it up and then go from there. So we'll just see whether or not I can get ten done.
So you found some of them are under concrete. What else? Did you find anything else that was?
Somewhere in the land is, like landscaping had been done, like landscaping.
And bushes over it or something.
Rock, bushes, you know, and I know people don't wanna tear up our landscaping. I just pay for landscaping, I don't care how much it is, so.
Yeah, but gotta be.
But it's got, but according to our ordinance, it has to be an accessible spot. It has to be.
Well, it makes sense, really.
It does.
I mean, you may never turn the thing off, but you gotta.
You don't want your maintenance person to have to go out there looking for it.
I will tell you this, just, just with this survey, it was very easy to find, like the curbs with the handheld. Like you could just walk up and it would tell you how far away you were, from where it was at.
These hidden ones, you mean?
Just the ones that we found, something like that. Yeah, it was easy to find. The hidden ones, not so much, but.
It's not your house, is it, Dave?
No.
That's a freaks out neighbors.
Charlie's.
Charlie's is hidden.
Huh?
Charlie's is hidden. In my neighbor's.
I was wondering if it was like additions, people putting on larger garages or. And you know, DIY type things where they port their own. There's a lot of people who are, you know, around here and.
Even like contractor that just didn't know or think, and if, you gotta keep in mind, if the curb stop was already buried by something else, like they're.
I didn't even know it was there, probably.
Probably didn't look for it, and if they paid their bill on time, nobody's checking on it, so.
All right, so we'll continue to locate the ones we cannot, and then come back with next steps for any that we need to remediate. Cause there's no saying the remaining sixty are all gonna be an issue.
No, I don't believe they will be.
Yeah.
Well, and the other thing is, can we? And this'll obviously be part of the discussion. I'm just like brainstorming at this point. Is there any money available that we could use for assistance for homeowners that have to pay a larger? Cause bottom line, we gotta find these, and, you know.
That's why I'd be curious to see how many we actually have to remediate, versus how many are under some dirt, and all you gotta do is bring it up. You know, that's, that's not a big deal. Go dig, go dig a hole.
Yeah, if it ends up being a, a huge cost to a homeowner, do we have funds that we can use to say, if you're having to spend X amount, then we can contribute this much to it? They did something similar when I lived in Cedar Rapids with the sidewalks. You know, they, they said, you know, we will pay so much, you know, for however many feet of sidewalk you have to repair to come up to code. And so, and the rest would be out of your pocket, so.
The good news is, we're not the only cities on through this right now, and I'm basically talking to the other cities that have the same problem, to try to come up with, you know, options.
Talking about this. What about our lead by business?
Yeah, that's been loaded, so we'll be working on that next. It's just another project.
Been worked on, yeah.
Yeah, they've got it loaded up.
Oh, I thought, that one time, then when they replaced the water meters.
They were supposed to do a lot of the lead from what I understood, yeah.
But they do, and to keep track of it.
Have not found that information yet.
We can call and ask.
All right.
Slightly off topic, but the blue lines, so that's how far the water lines go on Donald and Lori? Okay.
I do know there's a hydrant out in the field.
Yeah. Do you walk out there, you think, that's?
Sporthot is what that was.
Yeah, sporthot. But right now, we're done.
Yeah.
Well, what if somebody needs to walk their dog that far?
Yeah.
All right, so no action on eleven J just yet. Keep working on it. So we're on to eleven K. Deputy clerk resignation. So you do have, page fifty in your packet is the letter from Elizabeth Swain stating her resignation. So what I'm looking for is council approval. So let me, let me slow down a little bit. In speaking with Chris, we do still feel like the structure we established is the, is still the way for us to go. So I'm not looking for any restructure at this time. Purely looking for approval to repost the deputy clerk job. We did learn some lessons through this hiring. We originally put a lot of focus on more of the, this is gonna sound silly, but more of the clerk side. The expectations for a full-time clerk as far as financial knowledge and acumen and those types of things. Whereas we learned, we need someone who has some office experience. So greeting, greeting people as they come in, reading procedures, being able to input payments, but pretty, pretty minimal base knowledge coming in, and then we can train up to the rest. So we did, we did learn a little bit about what we need from this position. It does not change the job description. It's just gonna kinda change that profile of the candidate that we're looking for. So Emily, we're hoping to get this posted and just start looking in November. I don't think there's a, a big hurry. Chris is managing right now, but as we've, we've all stated, we don't wanna burn him out, so make sure he gets the help he needs. So if there are no questions, I would look for a motion to approve the posting of the part-time deputy clerk position per the previous job description.
So.
Moved by Myers.
Right.
Second by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. In other sad news, also in your packet, you will see the resignation of Dalton Tetro with our city maintenance. I will say that this is just an indicator of what the workforce is right now, as far as the churn. Dalton was, it was a good hire. We appreciate everything that he was able to do. Same with Liz. She was a good hire. They both got us moved over into this facility, got a lot accomplished in their time here. I do think we as a council, it's hard to see both of these on the same agenda, but we may have to get a little bit more comfortable with turnover, because people just don't necessarily stay in jobs for ten, twenty years anymore. I would like to onboard someone for, you know, a little longer than six months, but I think we've got, like I said, with this structure, we've got Chris, maintain the knowledge. I would love to build some folks in to help Chris out, and I think we'll get there. But we, we've learned some things in the first few months. What we have learned with the city maintenance position is the value of having someone who is a self-starter, who has, and, and I'm not saying that Dalton doesn't reflect these by any means, but, you know, that profile of that candidate's gonna be self-starter, mechanical acumen, you know, someone that can really help out with the maintenance on both buildings as well as equipment, not be afraid to jump into grounds work and all of those things. So with that. this is where I also think we, it would behoove us to make a bigger investment, to really have this person onboard. There's a lot more day-to-day that goes into the city maintenance as opposed to the deputy clerk. And so, for us to be able to bring in a quality candidate, I have included the job description within your packet. So, I would look for approval to post this job with one change to the description, and that is the pay range. Right now, it is fifteen to twenty-two dollars an hour. I would ask council that we increase that. My recommendation would be twenty to thirty dollars, but I'm open to discussion. And I do, like I said, I think this is just somewhere where we're going to have to make the investment so that we get someone onboard that can meet these, meet the essential job functions and hopefully have the job satisfaction to hang around for a bit.
I would definitely agree with moving it up. Taking another look at this, the type of positions that advertise paying fifteen to twenty-two dollars is not going to get us good candidates that are going to see this as a comfortable place to be for a while. I would, I would say putting that up to thirty would be great. Of course, depending on the, you know, the qualifications of the candidate, you know, where they're going to fall there, but it's a competitive market, you know, and people are bouncing from one place to another. And working where I work, where, you know, where you work, where it's a large workforce, that job board is always open. You know, every day, you get emails stating, "Position is open. This position is open." This is, well, there's a reason those are open and not being created. People are leaving those positions to go to other places. And so, if, it would only be doing ourselves a favor to bring somebody onboard for a long period of time. Money's going to speak to that desire more than anything.
It's the investment that we have to be willing to...
Well, it could be cheaper in the long run than starting out and bringing somebody from... Because I don't mean to brag or whatever, but I've been retired now for twenty-some years, and I was making thirty dollars an hour every time.
Yep, and now you make fifteen at Culvers, so, yeah. Who'd have thought?
Well, you heard me. That's...
We're going to have to look at, with this, with this going up. Would that be, I'm just going to say, would that be competing with Chris? Or is we, or we, you know what I'm saying? We're going to have to look the whole package of all of our employees.
That's a great question. So, I did, yep, I did do the calculations. The odds of us bringing someone in at the top of the range is unlikely. For them to be at the top of the range, they're going to have to be well on their way to certifications and those types of things. So, we're probably looking bottom, bottom to middle of the range.
So, you're saying between twenty, twenty-five, really?
Is where we would start someone, and that gives them room for growth. So, let's assume twenty-five. I did a calculator. I think that's around forty-seven thousand dollars a year. So, that's what it comes out to for salary. Chris's range right now, I looked it up, went from sixty-five to like ninety-five. So, we've still got a lot of lab, too.
Yeah, okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure.
I know, because I was, I checked this in, so, yeah, we've definitely got some, we gave ourselves room.
For this year's budget, just to keep it in perspective, I budgeted my new range, Guy's old salary with overtime and Jim's pay all as one. So, you have, you know, there's enough, and right now, we haven't used a lot. Last time I looked at it, it was still like two percent. So...
But that, I can agree with it.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be starting over again with somebody new.
To Chester's point, though, there is a cost associated with training someone. It does take away from my day. It does add more to my hours. You know, it, it does add time and money that is associated with constantly rehiring somebody.
A cost, there's definitely a cost there.
Yeah. My thing is, is just let's stay competitive, at least with other cities. I'm not really trying to stay competitive with every business out there that will try to stop us.
Yeah, private sectors always have these targets.
But the city always is going to be here. That's why I tell people.
Yeah.
Right, we have to.
We're not going to, we're not going to outsource out of the city maintenance.
I would need, motion to approve posting the job and updating the job description to twenty to thirty dollars for the hourly pay ranges.
Do you want a motion to accept his resignation?
No.
Okay.
So, I just need a motion to approve posting the city maintenance, a backfill for the city maintenance position and adjusting the job description pay range to twenty as the minimum and thirty as the maximum.
I'll make that motion next, Dave.
Motion by Bozenberg?
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I will say, Chris and I will work on timing for that with city maintenance. This type of year is slightly challenging in that there's not a lot of work to do, but at the same time, if we get a lot of snow, there is a lot of work to do. So, Chris and I will work together on what that timing looks like and what feels right, so we will...
Well, and then on the other hand, if we get somebody, maybe give some time to get acumen in with everything, too.
Right.
So, then rushing into summer months and...
That's true. So, we will have more to the November meeting one way or the other, so... I have all this old business. We have none unless anyone has anything they want to bring to the table. Alright, with that, I will go to final comments and discussion. Counselor Trump.
I'm not, this is quite appropriate, but do you have a shortlist of what we've got for projects to budget next year?
Going back to the CIP, yes.
Okay. Anything additional to that?
You had listed replace sewer lining. Look at that. You have replaced the dump truck at some point. Something that I did find out today in the budget session with clerk books was that we can put a category for our items that are on our CIP and then each year transfer money into that as a savings plan for these items. So, that's something to think about, too, when you're saying, "Well, I want to complete this or this." We can actually, you know, we have like an equipment reserve fund, but you can actually designate it for...
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement. And if it's under capital improvement, even if it's a subsection, you can still have a listener there as park, dump truck replacement, you know, old truck replacement. So, that's something to think about. That's something I'm going to work on with the budget sheet. Let's see, what else did you have? Actually, I have to say, I'm kind of impressed. We've already completed a lot of our CIP.
Sounds surprised.
Overlay on North Burnett Station, that was something that we've been talking about. And then update this comprehensive plan at some point. Yeah, and that's...
We've got a pretty good start.
We've got...
Not a lot of new additional things coming along.
It's, it's the parks, streets, and we have to make a decision whether we're going to do a complete reconstruction, which is costly, yeah, or if we're doing resurfacing in which ones. So, what we got, the list from HR Green, is it basically showed us ways to do both and the costs that's associated with that. Again, I'm applying for grants as I see them to try to get us some money for the street parks because we're going to need it.
We don't have debt availability for two more years. And we pay off the one lagoon, and then we have some more debt.
But I did go to a TIFF conference in Riverside with Ted and learned a lot more about TIFF and now can explain it, and possibly if we go for it again, we could, you know, have a little more understanding so that it actually makes us money and generates some revenue instead of just not, you know, being a flat rebate payout, so... Thank you. I'm trying.
Yeah, I think the only thing about that is they change their rules all the time.
They do, and like, for example, we wouldn't be able to pull from the school, which would be a major revenue, major...
You'd have to wait till you get a project and then check the rules.
And that's, you're absolutely right, and that's the way to go about it.
Got a question. Do we approve, do we talk about putting a crossroad and extension on from the highway back? Didn't we, more than walking trail, isn't that, didn't we?
It sounds familiar, yeah, because the trucks are, I don't think we ever got quotes. I think that was right when Guy was leaving, and he never got us a quote.
Well, they have like a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet of concrete or something. Yeah, because we, because of the trail, it always washes down on the trail and everything. I think something we ought to put in the...
Well, the trucks are always starting from there, and so it's...
Yeah, something we ought to put in the budget for the budget next year.
Probably more stop, and then they do take it off. The trucks don't normally take off too fast.
So, I understand this right, putting a, what, by what, crossroad?
About a hundred and fifty feet of concrete on for...
Concrete extension at the intersection.
Off, see, off, that we're... I'd be in favor of that.
Bear's told that I'd be very interested in giving us a deal on that.
Right, yeah, they can come do the work.
I knew we talked about it one time. I can't remember if we...
I don't, I don't think we have action that...
Did do it, okay. That's something we need to do, though.
I do know that the residents that are in their area would appreciate that because they are constantly complaining that road is getting run in because all the roads, the trucks coming down. Thank you.
Any else?
Nope.
Counselor Schultz, Counselor Myers? Alright. With that, I'd seek a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Moved by Myers, second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We are adjourned at eight oh three PM.
Thank you.